So I bring the Concord-Corolla Regional School Committee meeting to order. Please note we're being recorded.
And I will bring the Concord School Committee to order. Like to note once again that we are grateful for the many communications from the community. We know that this is perspective we need to deliberate and make the very best decisions we can on behalf of children in this community and the schools. We know that reconciling all the different opinions is going to be quite a challenge. We can't assure you everything will be reconciled to everybody's complete satisfaction. But I think the committees can assure you that our decisions and thinking behind them will be visible to you and will be fair. That's our commitment and our promise, and we will live by that.
Thank you. So let me do a roll to start us officially. Rainey?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Booth?
Here.
Johnston here. Anderson?
Here.
So the first thing we have on our agenda is the public hearing. So let's do that. And then first thing when we get into the 5:30 portion of the meeting, we'll about to move the executive session to the end of the meeting, should time permit. Okay, so I have a motion to open the public hearing on Concord Public School and Concord-Corolla Regional School District budgets for fiscal year '21.
Should move for both?
Second.
Second for both?
Rainey?
Aye.
Booth?
Cynthia for both?
Yeah, aye.
Wilson?
Aye for region.
Booth?
Aye for both.
Johnston, aye for both. So I think this is... Laurie, do you want to kick this off or Jared gonna jump right into it?
I think we should let Jared jump right in.
I think that's a good idea.
Then I'll start right with the zero-based budget process. So many of you are familiar with this slide. So what we did is we basically did the same process that we do in the winter. We went through every single line and worked with all the principals. And it was a tedious process, but we did it in about six weeks. It's important to note, one of the things that I did do is I'm going to compare the FY '21 new budget versus the FY '20 budget. And then the FY '21 budget, the new one, versus the FY '21 old one that was passed in December. Okay. So the FY '21 new budget is $40,777,193, which is 3.52% higher than the FY '20 school committee budget. This chart breaks it down by the 1,000 function. This slide shows the FY '21 new budget versus the FY '21 old budget. It is $5,681 less than that, or 0.01%.
Jared, quick question if I may. This one is dated today. This is quite consistent with the July 27th. Am I correct?
Correct. This presentation really has not changed since the 27th. There have been no numbers that have changed.
Excellent, thank you.
So we had some budget drivers. This is the FY '21 new budget drivers versus the FY '20 budget drivers. As you can see, a number of them here, the biggest one being that of tutors. And then special education tuitions. If you remember, that was just a... The way that we redid the circuit breaker. So overall, we identified just under $2.1 million in budget drivers. To offset the budget drivers, we had to have some cost savings versus the FY '20 budget. Here are many of those right here. So overall, we identified $617,871 in budget drivers. You can see here substitutes. We reduced all short-term subs. This year, we did leave money in the long-term sub-line. Here are the budget drivers for the new budget versus the old budget. We identified just under $581,000. Preschool offset, that was due to... We projected to receive about $140,000 this past December. Due to the pandemic, we're expecting that number to drop in half. We identified $611,341 in cost savings versus the FY '21 budget. Substitutes here being the largest one. Professional development being another one. We reduced that line. We're doing a number of PD within with using our own staff and our own teachers. Here are the FTEs. Currently, we have 387.09 FTEs in this budget, and here they are broken out. I did not include the transportation drivers' FTEs. That's something that we're still figuring out how to come up with what a 1.0 FTE is, but the money has been identified in there. Here is the difference between the FY '21 new budget and the FY '21 old budget. We did increase 7.93%. We went up 10 tutors. The reason for that is we're going to be utilizing them for a number of needs that we need if we stay in session. In addition, when the budget was passed, this passed December, we did have needs this year. So that's not a 10 FTE increase for this pandemic. We did have some needs that arose after December.
Jared, I heard the word percentage. I believe it was FTEs we're referring to, 7.93.
Oh, yes. Sorry about that, yes.
Good, just want to be clear for the audio here. Thank you.
As you know, we have some other revenue other than the grant and the general fund. Here is what we've identified this year in their salary offsets. We're expecting just under $468,000 for the CARES Act, and which is about $225 per student. And below that is some of the things that we can use that money on. Here are the special education tuitions amount. Currently, we have $2,318,949 identified in tuitions. We wanted to show the true amount of what the cost of tuitions are, and then we have a offset in the budget. So we have a $1,050... $1,050,906 offset. Right now, we are anticipating 26 out-of-district tuitions at CPS. That number could change by the day. And we have eight different budget locations. So I'll go through these. The first one is preschool. Here is the FY '20 school committee budget versus the FY '21 new budget. And it has decreased 14.76%. Here is the preschool old budget versus the new budget. Next is district-wide elementary. Here is the district-wide elementary old versus the new. And feel free to stop me. I'm going through these quickly because you've seen this presentation a few times now. But now we're getting into the elementary schools. First is the Alcott, the FY '20 budget versus the new budget. Then we have Alcott's old versus new budget. And then Thoreau. And then we have Willard. Willard again. And the middle schools. And then the old versus the new. And now we have district-wide. One of the things that we did do in this budget is we moved all of our tuitions that were in the elementary location as well as the middle school location, special ed tuitions, into the district-wide ripley. So that will be the reason for the big increase of 20.72% that you're seeing here. And then lastly, the old versus the new as well. And that is the CPS budget.
Jared, thank you for putting this together. But please extend those thanks to the school-based teams that did the work with you as well. We know that that was not a small amount of work to completely redo it as you did.
Kind of people involved. I will pass that along. All right.
Do we have questions from the committee or comments, observations? Laurie, could you speak to the substitute line? We know that for student health and faculty health considerations, we aren't going to have occasional people in the buildings. That makes sense. However, have we lost some flexibility that gives you pause?
I don't think so. We are... We're working on a plan, and it's going to vary building to building for sure because of the structures are different and the schedules are different. But we're looking to use in-house personnel. We're building roles and responsibilities regarding that. We're not looking to say grab a person to then say you are now the building-based sub because we don't want those people exposed over and over either. So likely, it will be within grade-level teams that say, example, a tutor who supports that team is going to be the fill-in if one of them is out. So that's how we're going to start the year and try it. We've got some contingency money if we need to look at another option. At the middle and high school, we've got a little bit of different wiggle room there just because of the hybrid schedule. So there's different structures and different opportunities. We're trying to build it so that it has some logical flow, and everyone will know what to expect, not a warning of kind of thing as much as we can avoid that. It might be the person gets sick the morning of, but everybody around them will know exactly what the plan will be ahead of time.
Education leads us to health, and health leads us to facility pretty quickly. Are the facilities leads at each building comfortable with the resources that are available to them?
Yes.
Given what we know?
Given what we know, and Jared can weigh in on this since he's been working the most closely with them. We are feeling very well-resourced right now. We've been able to get ahead of supplies and needs so that things are on-site in a timely way. That's continuing right on through the rest of the summer. And we have months' worth of preparedness. So I will stay ahead of that, so there isn't a chance of running out of anything.
Yeah.
Want to add to that, Jared?
I agree. I mean, in some cases, we have six to nine-plus months' worth of PPE. We've given custodians trainings. We're going to continue those trainings. I'm meeting with all of the leads on Thursday. Going to let them voice any concerns if they have any, which I have not heard. I have been meeting with the heads... The head of the CPS Union as well as the High School Weekly, just to voice and hear concerns. There hasn't been any. So I think we're really in good shape going into it. And that's kudos to Russ Hughes and Tim Shudo.
Yeah, and I would extend that to the building-based folks who make those buildings stand up every morning properly. Thank you.
Do you want to do questions from the public at the end? Or?
No, let's do it now. We're very mindful of the time, but we don't want to foreshorten any citizen comments. So we're going to ask people to be brief and concise, not repeat what's been heard before so that we can get a great deal done tonight if folks would be so kind. So we're going to look for hands raised in the chat here, the participant box.
And again, this is only about the CPS budget.
That is correct. Thank you, Wally. So while we're looking for another moment or two to see if there are any hands, I'll ask Jared, this version will be posted when and where for public review?
I hope tonight, if not by 10 o'clock tomorrow morning on our website, under Budget Information.
I think 10 o'clock tomorrow would be just fine. Thank you.
It's a... You can access it in the previous... It's already posted.
Yeah, we do have the version from the 27th posted, which really has not changed. And then an updated version from, was that last Monday, the 11th, I believe, is also up on our website, as well as the line item budgets are also up there.
Thank you for giving this the high visibility that you do. Wally, I'm not seeing any folks ending the meeting, looking to speak at this time.
When do we move on to the regional budget?
Great. This one, I'll go a little bit more in detail because there has been some changes. And because we do the revenue side, I think it's important to just explain how the revenue side works. So again, to understand the FY '21 budget, you also need to understand the story behind the FY '21 budget. There's a $271,189 difference between the FY '21 budget that was passed in December and this current one. Again, we took the same zero-based approach that we do in the fall. And I didn't mention this in my last CPS presentation, but oftentimes, when you vote that budget in December, it is already outdated because of so many changes that do happen even in the course of November 15th to December 30th. We received $297,000 for COVID CARES Act money that we're using $185,116 to offset this budget to get down to the Concord-ThinkCom guideline, and I'll explain that a little bit more. The superintendent's revised their new high school budget is $34,958,922, which is $271,189, or 0.78% higher than the FY '20 school committee budget. This chart breaks down the new recommended budget by the DESI function. High level. The superintendent's revised their new high school budget, recommend budget is... As I'm repeating myself, I'm sorry. Instead of breaking down the budget drivers by DESI function, I broke them down into categories. Here are the different categories in the budget drivers of the new budget versus the FY '20 old budget. So overall, we identified $1,166,965 in budget drivers. To offset those budget drivers, we had to identify cost savings. We identified $694,053 in cost savings, special education here being the largest one. We identified $73,816 in budget drivers in the FY '21 old budget versus the new budget. The reason why the campus monitors are on there is every year we offset the monitor salaries with parking lot revenue, about $50,000. We anticipate receiving half of that this year. Here is the new budget versus the old budget savings that we identified, just under $304,000. Here are things I just wanted to identify, that there were no changes between the FY '21 new budget and the old budget.
Shut that off.
It's not off.
Okay, listen, no ACs right now. We can go outside. We don't need the ACs on. Could you guys pick some?
We'll want to turn off our mics if we can. Thank you.
So I broke the FTEs into 18 different categories or types. This budget includes 28.16 FTEs. It's important to note that some administration clerical HR maintenance staff are split between the two districts. And again, this one also does not include FTEs for the drivers. Here is, this slide compares the FTEs between the old and the new budgets. The increase from the winter's budget is 1.88, and it's all in the teachers category, which was mainly caused by scheduling. But due to attrition, this expense category is less than it was in the winter with the new FTEs. Overall, total salaries are down just under $144,000 from the winter's request. Again, in addition to the general fund, the district receives additional federal and state grants that offset expenditures. We budgeted $190,311 in salaries to be offset by the MECO grant, $25,000 to be offset by the parking revolving account. And at this time, we're estimating to receive $297,000 in CARES Act money. Here are our total expected tuitions, broken out between non-public and collaborative tuitions. Also, we have our tuition offsets there. We did prepay just about $261,000 in tuitions that will be used to offset potentially future budgets. Those numbers are reflected in those, in these numbers. Right now, we've identified 35 out-of-district students. So unlike the Concord Public side, the region side is responsible for projecting revenue. The following list of items is the revenue we receive before we figure out the total assessments to the two towns. At this time, we still have not been given any indication what Chapter 71 transportation will look like. So we reduced that by $125,000 since the December budget. I feel that we can make up any lack of revenue by using E and D and other potential federal COVID-related grants. And I'm hearing some whispers of those. Based on the regional agreement, assessments are dictated by the October 1 enrollment. According to the October 1 enrollment, Concord had 76.1% of the share, and Corolla had 23.9. This is an increase of 0.85% for Concord over FY '19's October 1 number. The operating budget does not include debt or transportation. Therefore, we break out the revenue into three sections. The operating budget is $29,862,432. We then reduced that amount by other state and local revenue that I just went over in the previous slide. Therefore, the amount to assess above Chapter 70 in local revenue is $26,659,775. Underneath that box, transportation is broken out, and the amount to assess above the Chapter 71 reimbursement is $194,787. And lastly, we break out the debt.
So unbelievably annoying, and I'm in a sling.
And this slide is the new revised assessments. So if you take a look at the assessment comparison with decreased debt service, overall, we are only going up 0.59%. Concord will be going up 1.73%, and Corolla would have a negative assessment of just under $220,000 or 2.87%. And that is the region's budget.
So again, we would... I guess first of all, are there any committee questions for Jared?
Jared, quick review on CARES Act. That's a fiscal '21 requirement or not? Does it?
That is a fiscal '21 requirement. And at this time, all funds need to be expended by December 30th.
Thank you.
We can go back to, I want to say March 1st. I think it might be March 12th, but maybe March 1st and charge FY '20 expenses. I don't plan to do that, but it has to be expended by December 30th.
So that's a separate book you have to keep.
Correct. We have identified a new budget line for that, a grant, sort of a grant line, that we're charging everything to that line so we can easily identify it. We will be audited on that, so we are keeping very tight records of every purchase.
And we'll note, this is where local education meets up with our legislators elsewhere who are working on our behalf.
So I would ask if anybody in the audience has a question for Jared? Please raise your hand. I don't see any. So well, thank you, Jared, and thank your team. Hope you've kept track of how many times you've given that presentation in the last two weeks.
He gets to do it again tonight, in fact, so.
You didn't hear everything you wanted to hear. Head on over to ThinkCom at seven. We'll be there. So I would take a motion to close the public hearing on the CPS and CCRST budgets.
Should move for both?
Second for both?
Thank you. Any discussion? Rainey?
Aye for both?
Booth?
Aye for both.
Wilson?
Aye for region.
Johnston, aye for both. So I would take, I think I need to do this. I'll take a motion to reopen the Concord Carlisle and Concord School Committee meeting.
So move for both?
Second for both.
Rainey?
Aye for both?
Wilson?
Aye for region.
Booth?
Aye for both.
Johnston, aye for both. And so we can move to a comment. I've got a few people on here. I don't know if people are here to make comments or not. I will say that given the abbreviated time we have for this meeting, given a hard stop for FinCom hearing at 6:50, we will limit people's comments to three minutes unless we see a significant number of hands. And please, if you would, let me, if other folks have made the same comment, just mention your affirmation of that and try to stick to new points. Carol?
So do we need to promote her to get her into the meeting? How's?
Sorry, I've asked her, I've asked her, start a radio and unmute.
So Carol Yell?
Here she comes.
Hi, Carol.
All right. I think I'm fully visible and unmuted. Is that correct?
Correct. We've got you now. Thank you.
Takes a minute to maneuver the screen, as you guys all know very well. All right. I'll be quick. I'll be reading a statement. "Thank you, Court. School committee members and administrators. I understand the incredible work that is being done. My name is Carol Yell, 44 Cross Street, Carlisle. I am the co-president of the Concord Public Schools and Concord Carlisle Regional School District Special Education Parent Advisory Council. I would like to read the following statement that was submitted to both school committees from the CPAC board. To members of the Concord Public School and Concord Carlisle the CPAC, keeping with our role as an advisory to the school committee, would like to ask that you investigate and provide public comment on the timeline waiver used by Concord Public School and Concord Carlisle Regional School District during the spring 2020 COVID-19 school closure. This was reported in both Boston Globe on July 22nd, as well as more specifically by the Carlisle mosquito on August 13th. The links to the article are provided for your reference in the correspondence that was sent earlier this week. I thank you for your attention to this important matter." Thank you, Court.
Yeah, thank you, Carol. I know that some of us, probably all of us, were aware of the, the Globe article and the, the mosquito reporting as well. And to, to my best knowledge, the, the allegation or the concern related to timing from different governmental bodies that came into the district. And I believe the administration was, was pretty nimble in responding to the first one and then even more so with the second one that corrected the first one. Would that be an accurate portrayal, Dr. Hunter?
Essentially, you know, I'm not prepared to speak to it tonight exactly. We certainly can if the committee wishes at another day.
No.
I, I provided the detail to the mosquito. So I want to be sure everyone's clear. We're being very open about anything that occurred, which was very minor in nature and resolved very quickly and just frankly symptomatic of the pandemic. So I think I'll leave it at that for tonight.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Don't see any. So next we'll move to correspondence. I think my tally came out to 12. I don't know if you ran one court, but almost.
Mine was six and then two additional that were specific, which I'll note in a moment.
And most were weighing in on remote versus cyberism, school opening plans. What were you going to mention, Court?
Yeah, the six that the Concord Public Schools received were similar. And then we received a communication from Dee Ortner, who notified us that she will be the FinCom liaise to the school committee for the coming year. So we welcome that relationship with Dee. And somebody we know well, David Modell, notified us that he will be the Concord Carlisle School Committee Liaise from the Carlisle Board of Selectmen. And we welcome that relationship for the coming year.
And thank them for the hours they are about to spend over the next year.
Yes, we're here.
Okay, there is no, well, chairs and liaisons reports. I have nothing to report, Court, to you.
I can be quick. The Policy Committee met last week. And we reviewed any potentially COVID-related policies that might deserve special attention right now and were pleased to find that the work we had already done, we think will suffice in, in large part for now and didn't have to crack open any of the many other policies that do relate to student health and other, other things that could be relevant in the year ahead. So there was that piece. Secondly, the Citizens Group to Volunteer that supports the high school community service effort met this week and are fully on board to support the high school and the students in community service opportunities with, needless to say, a lot of accommodation for the pandemic that we're coping with globally and here in Concord Carlisle. So I'd like to publicly thank those volunteers for once again mobilizing and supporting the high school in that effort. And then finally, I don't know if we have an adult ed rep here, but they're, the community education and adult education course catalog was released this week and they've moved almost entirely virtually, not completely, but very close and done a commendable job doing that. So this is one of the many ways the school district tries to support larger community interests in ways that we can do it off budget. And so I think the staff and the volunteers with that program deserve our, our acknowledgement tonight and we thank them as well. That's what I've got, Wally. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I can report that the chairs of the Concord School Committees, the Select Board, the FinCom and Carlisle's FinCom and Select Board and town managers, our town manager as well, had a meeting just to discuss where we are and you know, what each town is doing municipally and what we're doing at all schools. And good conversation, basically, from our standpoint, we just updated them on everything you just heard in the hearing. And it was not a particularly challenging discussion. It's also mentioned that we may want to do that on a more regular basis going forward. Anybody else have any liaison reports? Okay. So we have another superintendent's report tonight, so we can launch right into the reopening task force updates. Doctor Hunter?
Great, thank you. So we have essentially four topics for you tonight. We're not going to backtrack to things we've already spoken about. We're just going to give you updates on the newer pieces of information. Our HVAC consultant is actually in the meeting, so we're going to ask him to give you a high level summary of what he found and our efforts to respond to that. We just briefly are going to show you the illness protocols. I don't think we'll go into any depth on those. I just want to be sure the committee realizes they're well-developed and ready to be rolled out. Just a couple of pieces of the metrics of the latest virus data. Susan Rask is on the call to Concord Health Director. If you want to speak with her. And then we had said we'd do a follow-up discussion of COVID testing and the options. And we do have new pieces to bring to that discussion for the committee to consider. So I think first order of business, if, if Chris could promote Kalish Viswanathan, he's our HVAC consultant. He spent the last two weeks in our schools, all of them physically, and then putting together a presentation for you. We're going to only do highlights, I think, of the presentation, just because it's 55 slides long, I think, somewhere in there. Jared's met with him at least a couple of times. I've been on at least a couple of calls. So we're pretty well informed as to the outcomes and overall, we're validated that the buildings are in a good place and have done the remediation recommended at the middle schools. So I will turn it over to him and welcome him to our meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Hunter. Thank you, everyone. My name is Kalish Viswanathan. Going to be brief about, I've done several of these ventilation system readiness for a lot of school districts and universities. So I'm going to go through the process I use and the recommendations made. So as Dr. Hunter said, this is 55 slide long, but I've kind of made it concise for the timeframe I have. I think it's important for everyone to know that generally with all my kind of basic analysis, I try to understand, you know, what's out there, what's in the, you know, what's the research being done and how the virus spreads in more and more, you know, getting more and more confirmation that it's more person to person, it's respiratory. But there's still a chance that what we call aerosols being transmitted through the air. And that's generally most cases in indoor crowded places with poor ventilation. And what we call a short-range airborne transmission. So most important thing is to try to control that. And what are we doing in our schools to control that? ASHRAE is another guideline that we follow as HVAC engineers. And their position statement is very similar about that this is likely. So as HVAC engineers, we've got to make sure our buildings are doing the best it can to prevent this. And primarily it's ventilation and filtration and ventilation is basically bringing in more outside air. The more outside air you can bring in, you're basically diluting the viral load in the room. So that's kind of the basics behind it. CDC also kind of recommends the same thing that ensure that ventilation systems are operating properly and try to bring in more outside air. You know, obviously we got to be careful of the weather and allergy seasons and safety of the students. I call this as layered strategies. I'm sure Dr. Hunter and everyone else has spoken about this. But you know, the most basic thing we all know that is going to prevent us from catching this is wearing a mask, practicing safe distancing and washing hands and cleaning and disinfecting, right? These are basic things that everyone's focused on. You know, my basis of my analysis is completely on this, that there's going to be a hybrid model or lesser number of students in the classroom. It's not business as usual. That's how I'm evaluating these systems and people are wearing masks. There is no singing, there are no wind instruments. There's none of that kind of happening in those. So my analysis don't include that. So most important thing is focus on increasing ventilation rate per person, which is diluting the air, reducing the viral load and filtering the air, trying to enhance that by providing better filters. And where we can't do that, in some locations, we have that challenge. And they are particularly indoor locations or places where I'm not comfortable, where the units may not be running as to its optimal levels, that we're actually going to be putting HEPA air filters, which is a high efficiency filter, basically cleans the air down to like 99.97%. So those are kind of the layered strategies. There are a lot of other strategies out there, which is UV that people have heard of, ionization. UV has its role in certain places, but definitely not a school in classrooms. And ionization generally, I am not for it right now, only because it's, it's basically an electrical air cleaner, it uses chemistry. And the general consensus in our industry is that anything that uses chemistry to clean the air, we really don't know the after effects of it. So let's stay away from it. Reviewed all your schools, you know, the elementary schools, the middle school, the high school and the integrated preschool. Typically, when I look at this, I look at classrooms, look at a sample of classrooms, make sure that the units are the same everywhere. Library, nurses' room, medical waiting room, gymnasiums, cafeteria, these are the places where students are going to assemble. And that's kind of my review. I did that the week of August 3rd and thank you to Jared and his team for helping me out. And you know, they did a fantastic job of kind of guiding me through this school and make it like, you know, real quick for us to produce this report. This is kind of a high-level dashboard. Hopefully the colors are good enough to see, but you know, this is just a high level. I spent some time talking in detail about Peabody and Sandburn yesterday. So everyone knows that, that's, you know, those buildings are slightly older than your other buildings. And in addition to Ripley, in some areas where the systems are older and they're not as technology-friendly today, but they're still working, you know, they're, we're still able to provide the necessary amount of outside air that's needed. And just to give everyone a references, generally the guidelines today, what we follow is ASHRAE ventilation guidelines. You know, basically call for like 12 to 15 CFM as in cubic feet per minute of outside air per person in a classroom. And what we're trying to do is increase that and bring it like 20 CFM. And these systems are capable, but there are some checks that need to happen at Peabody and Sandburn, which the team actually have given them a detailed checklist and actually going through that as we, you know, I think, I think they've already started this week. You'll see in certain places where I talk about natural ventilation with HEPA air purifier, these are places where I was not so comfortable with the systems that I basically said we should install. You have natural ventilation, open up the windows, but let's install HEPA air purifiers. And I believe that, you know, I was surprised that, you know, by the time I sent that email out, an hour, I got a text from Jared saying already ordered them. So thank you. I think that action really means a lot. And then, you know, there are a lot of places of mechanical and natural ventilation, you know, important things to bring in as much outside air. So if you can open up windows, open up. Willard, you know, I got to tell you a joke on this, that I walked in, I saw the system, I think it wasn't even five minutes, I said, I'm done. It's a good school. It's a really good school. You know, you've got all the best things in there. And you know, just one thing is make sure that you do not open your windows in your classrooms because the systems are interlocked and actually has an adverse effect. So as much as I'm encouraging you to open up windows, Willard, in my kind of analysis, do not open up those windows. But it's a great school, same with Concord High School. In all these schools, other than Ripley, you're bringing in way more outside air than by code, but you're actually recovering the energy. So what we call is dedicated outside air systems and they have energy recovery wheels. So they are more newer design, newer technology. They have controls in place and one measure of knowing that you're bringing the right amount of outside air in these rooms is carbon dioxide. And most of these rooms actually have carbon dioxide sensors in either in the duct or in the classroom that you can actually measure the level of carbon dioxide. So that's another way of knowing it. So you know, Ripley, again, same thing, older systems. But still, you know, they're working and we're going to be putting HEPA air purifiers in most of the locations because again, they're older systems. But when we tested them, we were not sure. And there were certain kind of challenges that we kind of said, let's just put some HEPA air purifiers. So that'll actually make the place, you know, even more safer. So my overall analysis is that, you know, Peabody and Sandburn has its challenges, but we're going through it, we're checking them, making sure that every unit is working. There are some areas that, you know, need some more attention, which they've actually hired contractors to do this. And almost every other school, you know, is in great shape to actually move on and get you the right amount of ventilation. You know, use the classrooms safely with the right amount of ventilation, as long as you practice the basic of wearing masks, safe distancing, and I know that you're going through the disinfecting. Another thing is like a week before school starts is the instruction is to keep running the equipment as much as possible. So we're flushing the air out. And then after every cleaning, every day, the units are going to run for two more hours. And that's because again, we're trying to bring in as much outside air to flush everything out. And before school starts, one hour, right? So when people come in, there's fresh air in there. So we also focused on kind of, this is kind of what I talked about a little. We focus on medical waiting rooms and I've given guidance on medical waiting rooms in terms of how do you create negative pressure? So all your medical waiting rooms and. So all your medical waiting rooms and nurses' rooms will have HEPA air filters. The medical waiting rooms are where students are going to be, you know, like waiting for their parents to come and take them. And that's going to be under negative pressure. That's more like, you know, it's, it's going to be treated like a hospital only because we want to make sure that the air is, doesn't go outside the room. It's actually, you know, it creates a negative pressure and it's outside. And that's also treated through HEPA filters. So that's my quick kind of overview of all the systems and you know, I'm, as I, I remember the first day when I talked to the team, it was a Sunday and I told them I need help if I, if you really want me to do this fast. And thank you, thank you, everyone. Because, you know, without your support and helping me know the systems and quickly teach me what's happening. I know systems really well, but I don't know your systems. But you've, you really helped me kind of create this. And if you have any of the questions, feel free to let me know.
Thank you. That was, that was, that was excellent. I've got a couple of questions, but I, I'm going to be patient. Other questions? That might come from the committee?
I think my question is more to Dr. Hunter as a result of the presentation. What additional work needs to be done in the nurses' areas regarding making them negative pressure?
I'm going to actually refer that back to Kalish, because, because we're working on all of those pieces. We've ordered every piece of equipment he's recommended. So what are our next steps there in the nurse's office to get that to the negative pressure?
So there are, you know, certain places where, you know, in some cases, I forget the classroom, it's maybe, it could be the high school or the places where window panels will be removed and, you know, plywood would be put in so the duct can be ducted out. And the medical waiting rooms will be under negative pressure, kind of the machine I showed you right here. You know, that's how that'll look. If there are any return air grills, they will be closed. But in the nurse's office too, they're going to, we're going to put a HEPA filter so that the air is cleaned out completely.
So the good news is part of this report includes the follow-up and the support to do the actual next steps. So we're going to have guidance through all of that. And we're well-positioned to execute.
So you have your shopping list and you've gotten some of the things and?
Shopping's pretty well-done, a lot of it. Jared's working with Russ on the rest.
Good, thanks.
The table, two slides back, I believe it was. One more, yeah. Does that imply that Sandborne is going to come online with additional HEPA filters as well? What does that suggest to us?
So Sandborne in certain locations, yes, there will be HEPA.
Okay.
And like the, I believe the cafeteria is the location because the units that were, you know, they are operating, but because they couldn't be accessed, they're in a very tough location to look at that I was not confident about it. And that's where the students are going to be with their masks open. They have windows too. So we're basically going to be putting two HEPA filters right there. Same with Peabody. Peabody will also have HEPA filters in the dining room.
Do me a favor, keep this one brief or, or I'll get in trouble for getting us off track. In a year, are you going to come back and tell us that we could do UV with that particular spectrum and hide those in our filters?
So, you know, UV again has its own application, more for like hospital areas. Really not in a, in a school application. So ultraviolet light is, you know, definitely more meant for a hospital application than for this, you know, even a year from now, I wouldn't recommend that.
Got it. Thank you. Okay.
You said, can I ask a question? The system at Willard is better with everything closed. What about at CC? Is it? Is that system better closed or better with windows?
You can keep CC as in Concord, the high school, correct?
Yes.
Yes, you can, if you want to keep it open, the windows open, you can.
It doesn't ruin the system.
It doesn't affect it. Unfortunately with, or fortunately, with Willard, the, the window opening is interlocked with the actual HVAC system. So when you open the windows, it actually shuts it down and you don't get ventilation. So and it's got a, it's got a, it's got a way more sophisticated system that I have never seen before, which is good. It's great. I've seen it in Ivy League schools. Never in an elementary school. And as far as I saw it, I'm like, we're done. You know, this is like, you know, you've got the Cadillac out here or the Tesla.
Other, other questions?
Certainly, we're going to get the entire slide deck and post that for everyone to have access to. So there'll be a lot more detail available for those who want to get it.
Yeah, my slide deck's got a lot of frequently asked questions too. I, you know, I kind of assemble questions from everywhere that I present and meet with clients and universities and teachers and everyone else that I try to assemble them and just put them on there. So if anyone wants to see it, can see it.
If there's a particular air quality question, Dr. Hunter, where would a community member direct it?
I think they could email me or Jared, and then we'll get a consult as needed. We're happy to answer anything.
Okay. We know you have a few other things on your plate.
I actually hope the slide deck, when we post it, will answer most questions. It's very, very detailed.
Okay. Well, we're, we're grateful to you for, for your work, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I'm always available to help. So thank you once again, Dr. Hunter, Jared, everyone. Bye.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, go ahead.
Okay. Um, two other pieces that I wanted to just bring up for brief sharing here. This is our response protocol. And Susan Rask is on the call. She wants to jump into either of these next two topics. She's welcome to. We've been working with the Concord Board of Health. Susan is health director and the public health nurse, as well as the two lead nurses, CPS and CCHS. And then sharing with the administrators and sort of keeping the cycle going. Every task force reviewed this last. We've had a lot of, a lot of feedback as well. And I'm not going to go through all of it. I thought it was just important for you to see what's in place. We have thorough protocols in place for a positive COVID case. Just to note that at that point, we are absolutely turning it over to the Board of Health and under their direction. Anyone positive does not return to school without permission of the public health nurse. There is also communication pieces in here and some indication of who would be quarantined at the elementary schools. We know for sure. Desi has said all students would be quarantined. Middle and high school, the public health nurse will do the close contact work. As a school, that does not mean we may not go beyond that, depending on how many close contacts there are in terms of quarantining or having kids and staff remotely working. I will definitely be noticing, this has been a common question, anyone in a classroom, student or staff, if there's been a positive case. And I expect very assuredly to be noticing the entire building, if not the whole district. So I wanted to just be sure everyone's comfortable that there will be a high level of transparency here. We're going to be doing symptom screening through electronic means. These will be the self-reports that staff, parents, and high school kids need to fill out every morning in Aspen. So we'll be rolling this out over the next two weeks. It's meant to be the spot where you say to yourself, I should not be going to school. And we are going to mandate this for everyone. And we will be holding people accountable as we get the process up and running. If you are symptomatic, you'll need to be tested prior to returning to school and working with the school health and administrators. And then just in terms of school closure, and I'm going to get to this in a minute with the metrics we're going to show. Desi has recommended that we stay open per one case. We've put language in here that says we may not stay open if it's just one case. It will very much depend on the context. We've played out enough scenarios to realize that a high school case could have so many close contacts that we're not going to stay open and push through that. I think that's a big part of my message tonight. Whatever, you know, I'm absolutely here to recommend that we reopen the schools. That doesn't mean we're going to just open them and blindly stay open. We're going to be constantly reviewing all of this context of what's going on around us. And it's just critical that everybody hear that. If there's multiple cases, this is the Desi language in terms of the, the steps you may take. Even for one case, there might be a short-term closure versus the fourteen days a possibility. No matter when or if I close, I do need to be on the phone with the state to talk to them about that.
Lori?
Yes.
Interrupt you if I may. Hang on to that slide. So imagine a closings. Take another thirty seconds. Tell us what a pivot toward remote might look like at that.
Got it.
With that event.
So the, and I'm going to do this at the high level and then back into what we were just talking about. So what the state's released, and I'm going to show you our local metrics in a minute. This came out last week. That the average daily cases per one hundred thousand locally, that would be very locally. Being within these ranges, this is the guidance as to when you would close greater than eight per one hundred thousand. I've been talking a lot with Susan and our nurses. Clearly, if we have any inkling that there's an outbreak in a school, we're going to close at minimum that school, if not the district, depending on how widespread that is. So, you know, now this is where we're going to be looking at the context that's going on. I will assure you, my recommendations are to be very conservative in that. Just because we know that there's going to be exposures that we will trace. And then there'll be exposures that may have happened in other settings. And there's a very big public perception and safety factor that we want to assure everyone feels comfortable being in the schools. So we'll be working both with the local level. And again, Desi's recommending potential closures between two or more cases. I think it could be one, in which case a school may go remote and not the whole district. But that's all going to depend on the, the situation and the the close contact tracing that happens and where that leads us. Clearly, if you're up at these rates, and we're down here in this unshaded level of five in the last fourteen days, which will be updated tomorrow. Clearly, if we're up here at greater than eight per one hundred thousand, that's no question. The, the decision-making really starts to come if you've got a pocket within a school that overall, you're still down in these areas that would allow you to stay open. But as a, you know, district, you feel that's not the best decision, knowing what's happening. So I feel like we've got a lot of the scenarios played out and we'll be able to utilize this as our guide. I'll be making decisions in conjunction with, with Susan and the public health nurse. And then certainly, Desi will be part of that discussion as well.
Lori, if you have a positive case in a school and you move to a closure, is how will we determine or how will you determine how long that closure is for? And will you make that sort of announcement at the get-go about?
Yeah, it'll depend on what we know. If it's a single case. And as far as we know at the moment, the close contacts are contained and they're going to be quarantined. It might be a closure for deep cleaning of a couple of days, and then we go back. If over those couple of days, though, we realize that the close contacts are, the circle's bigger, then it might be a full fourteen-day quarantine, you know, fourteen-day remote closure, just to be sure we get all the way through it and watch what happens to the data. Those are the scenarios I see starting, you know, the phases of a couple of days. Do you need to go to the fourteen days? And then if you've got community spread, you're out for the, the longer timeframes like we experienced in the spring.
Lori, might I ask that Susan Rask introduce herself? And Susan, tell us how impressed you are with all the public health expertise that Dr. Hunter has gathered.
I think she's done a great job. I was really pleased to hear the ventilation person who just spoke. That's a really well-thought-out plan. I think that's great. The public health indicators are all good. I think that I was so grateful when Desi put out the guidance that we're working with and the state put out the map. So I think the indicators are all as favorable as they're going to be.
I'll just put up a couple of the slides Susan shared with us last week. And she'll be doing these in the seminars, the webinars that are coming up this week for parents and staff. Susan, you just want to mention a little bit of this data and I won't do all the slides.
So, you know, as of August 12th, we have a hundred and eighty-five cases in total since April, but more than a hundred of those were in nursing facilities. There've been less than five new cases in the past fourteen days, and that's been consistent throughout the summer. We do actually have three active cases at the moment, but nothing in school-aged children. And the case counts in have been lower in the past fourteen days compared to the previous fourteen-day period. So just in terms of what's going on in this, in Concord, all of our metrics are looking good.
And then just a little backtrack, and then I'll show the map.
Yep. So, you know, this is the CDC level of mitigation, you know, needed by level of community transmission. And back in April, all of Massachusetts was in substantial uncontrolled transmission, which is why we were all asked to kind of shelter in place. But right now in Concord, we have no to minimal community transmission. And so not a whole lot is needed for mitigation. So, you know, we really just have isolated cases, which is good.
And then this is the math.
So Susan, Susan, you study public health, and this is your, your profession. How does, how does a public maintain its sense of urgency or its sense of commitment to keep these numbers down? I mean, I can make up answers, but I don't know what the experts say. What?
You know, I, I think that's such a good question. And I think govern, maybe Governor Baker said it best when he said, this virus will take any opening that we give it. So Massachusetts has come a long way since spring, but we cannot be complacent. We've come the long way. We've come because everyone followed the guidance they were asked to follow. And we have to keep following it. And and it works. We know it works because we bent the curve in Massachusetts and we reduced our case counts hugely. So I would urge people just, you know, don't go to large gatherings, be careful. Restrict your social circle to people you know are being careful. And I know kids want to be with their friends and everybody would like life to get back to normal, but we just can't go there right yet. You know, we have to continue to be vigilant and, you know, only meet with social distancing and masks and not in large groups and not, not be complacent about the fact that we have very little disease in town right now. Because I think we've all seen down south how quickly the disease can kind of explode when people aren't careful.
All right. Thank you. Well, thank you for staying vigilant on our behalf. But I hear you. We've got to do our vigilance too, each one of us individually and in every family unit and every school and every classroom, or, or we're going to lose this.
I completely agree.
Thank you.
I can go to the last topic unless you have other questions.
I just have one question for, for the numbers, because we focused on Concord, but then we have the high school. To what extent are you factoring in the Carlisle?
He's. Carlisle looks just as good, maybe a little teeny bit better. So you didn't see that slide, but we do have the Carlisle data. And we will be planning to put out sort of a town COVID dashboard every week with the updated numbers. They get updated on Wednesday afternoons and we'll, we'll release the updated dashboard either Thursday or Friday. And that'll have the Concord and Carlisle numbers.
Susan, will there be like any demographic stratification on those numbers? Or will they just be like in the aggregate for the zip code?
So there's, there's what you, there's how it's going to look.
Okay.
That's just an example of how it's going to look. This is, we actually have three active cases in Concord at the moment. I don't have it in front of me, how they break out by age group, but, but nobody in the, nobody in the ten to twenty-year, zero to ten-year age range.
Certainly, the state-level data, and I'm sure it can be aggregated, is, is available by age group. This is what Susan provided. Also in the slide deck, you can see the zero to nineteen group is not being as heavily hit as the older population.
Yep.
Susan, there's a, you would describe this pretty eloquently on a call we were on the other day, but one of the things that I'm concerned about is people traveling out of state for business. And we have strict protocols for what people are supposed to do as they come back. And for people who are on the call, if we could just refresh folks of what that is, because you know, we can be doing everything we can try to do. But if somebody ventures to a, to a high-incidence state and returns, puts us at greater risk.
Yep. So a little over a week ago, Governor Baker issued a revised travel order that says if you travel outside of New England or New York and New Jersey, the whole Northeast is looking really good right now. If you travel outside the Northeast, you have to get a negative COVID test within seventy-two hours of returning to Massachusetts. Or you have to get one when you get back. And you have to stay in quarantine until you get a negative test result. So first of all, I would urge people, if you want to take that final summer vacation, do it in New England. It's a really safe place to be right now. I, I know people sometimes have to travel, you know, to other parts of the country for work, but I would really ask people to either get tested or But I would really ask people to either get tested or quarantined. You know, there are parts of the country that just don't look very good right now where there's a lot of disease. And if, if you have to go to one of those places, you really, we're just asking that people be cautious and try not to bring it back to Massachusetts.
Thank you.
And if you do go there, don't, you know, don't go to any large gatherings, kind of stick to yourself and don't go out in public too much.
Because we've got a number of people with us tonight, Susan. Can you, can you tell us how to access a COVID test if we can't quarantine for 14 days and we have returned from out of New England?
Yeah, if you just Google Massachusetts COVID tests, there should, there's a whole list of testing sites that, that are accessible to everyone. Some of them are free in the 30 towns where the government, that are the yellow towns that the governor is putting additional resources. Most of those, those towns have free testing available at, at one clinic or another. Or, or you can talk to your doctor who might also have some suggestions where to go.
So a lot of easy ways to do this.
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
And Susan, I believe Rhode Island is unfortunately a state three.
Cause I. Yeah. Yep. They just updated that and, and made Rhode Island an unhappy red state. So there are exceptions. If you live in Rhode Island and work in Massachusetts, you can come across the border. But for the most part, if you travel there, known as just a casual traveler, you've got to get a test before you come back.
Thank you.
So Lori, another talk.
Yeah, we were going to, our fourth topic of the night. Susan, you're welcome to stay around for this discussion. We had a week ago, had some conversation about COVID testing before school start or even into the school year. I think we're going to provide you some updates and I've had different ones of you, different conversations. So I'll just do the summary and then we can open it up for discussion. I did follow up with our liaison to the Broad Institute, who still is assuring us that option is available. That's a lab in Cambridge. They will provide us the test. We do need medical people to provide, to administer the test and manage all the logistics ourselves. They are a lab that turns testing around in 24 to 48 hours. It is approximately $50 a test. So there's the catch. That is available in time before school starts. They can get it to us. We would do it en masse and ask, you know, we'd have to work on the timeline as to how we'd manage that and when we do it. They can offer it to us weekly. Again, the cost will be the sticky point there for sure. They also are now partnering with a lab out of New Jersey that's working on a pilot saliva test. There was a lot of media this weekend about this out of the NBA and Yale. That is a lab that would then have a family essentially be what they call a pool. They submit because if one of them is positive, the whole family gets quarantined. So it's considered a pool. Those are, again, just in the early discussions with this group, there was a follow up meeting today. So we could certainly express interest in being part of that. It's a little cheaper because it's $100 per pool. So if it's four to five people in the pool, you can do the math, it's a little less. There would likely be some corporate money attached because the group that's running the pilot is looking for numbers of tests to run to continue their processes. So I don't have any more information than that. There would have to be a follow up phone call. And then finally, we met with Emerson Hospital as a follow up again yesterday. A couple of you were there for that. Emerson had been talking with us about how they might help support some testing efforts. They run combination of their own in-house lab and send tests to Broad Institute. So both of those have good turnaround times. They are, are willing to talk with us on some options, but they couldn't do it all at once. We'd have to stagger. One option that came up there that hadn't come up was that we would essentially set policy and then ask families to do the testing on their own. And there would be insurance coverage for those who were eligible. And essentially the costs would be deterred over to that process. So that was the first time that had come up. I think it's important to just talk fact of all this, you know, testing is a moment in time. And I know Susan's glad I'm being so clear about this. Testing is a moment in time. It only gives us facts based on what's happening at the moment of the test. So you might get a hundred percent negative test rate before we open school. And it doesn't impact, it doesn't give you information what's happening after that. That said, there, you know, there's mixed benefit to that. I think it helps us know what our baseline is coming in and probably sets a stronger sense of security and safety going into the schools, which I do think is something to consider. If we wanted to try to do some regular testing, which is really how you prevent outbreaks, we would have various things to talk about, including costs and pilot options and those kinds of things. So that's where we are. Really open for discussion with the committee to talk on what they're, what you are, are interested in pursuing and what we might do from there. I think finally, just comments on what I've heard, both more formally and less formally. I do think there's support among the staff for this. So I don't expect there's an issue there if we were to ask for testing. We can write policy for students because of the remote learning program is built. Anyone not complying with the testing can go on a remote plan. So that's, like I said, continues to be an interesting world we're in where suddenly there's this other option now. So we do have some local authority there in terms of the students. And I think you'd have the cooperation of the staff. In fact, they, they seem highly supportive. And I think I'll leave it at that. That's, that's really where we are. It's definitely a working discussion.
And this will not be necessarily the only discussion.
Correct. Obviously, the one timing piece I remind you of is if you want to do anything before school starts, we probably need to settle on that within the next week at the latest, or we'd be against the clock.
So, so by inference, Broad and the Yale option would be district direct billing. And if we go to Emerson's lab or through Emerson to Broad, there's a potential for insurance.
That is my understanding, yes.
And if Emerson were to support a desire here for testing, by rights, they would be trying their best to see that they didn't deny any of their other member towns the same, the same service. So things could get quite demanding all around. You talked about point in time. Given Emerson's capacity, point in time, correct me if I'm wrong, would be at best building based.
That was the sense I got from them. They could handle about a building at a time over the course of a week. So we'd have to start staggering return schedules. It would be a, a change to what we're thinking right now.
So, so we would know that for a moment in time, 48 hours prior, things were at a certain state, which would give us comfort. But some people in the public health world would say, yes, but for some people that would be false comfort and would perhaps suggest that people could let down their guard.
Yeah, clearly it would have to come with an education piece that that is not how you need to interpret it if we were to consider it, a strong education piece that just because you had one negative test does not mean you're forever COVID safe. So.
So I think, I think your words bear repeating. We'd be, forgive, forgive the terminology, we'd be buying a baseline.
I guess technically, yes.
That's it. You know, that's, that's all we get, if I'm correct.
Unless you'd consider another way to keep the regular testing going, which obviously has got its complications too. Admittedly, I think I just have to say this out loud because this is not a conversation any local community, school district should be having. This should be being managed above us at the state level, if not nationally. And it's really frustrating. I was on with some of my other colleagues around the area. And there's a good handful of us trying to figure out if you can piece something together here. And it just is very frustrating that we're even in the position. So.
Well, no, we have students in Boston, Concord and Carlisle. And thankfully, our Emerson Hospital has many a Boston partner. So were we to go in this direction, we wouldn't see big issues that couldn't be managed there in terms of supporting all students and staff properly.
I have a question. First off, is the Broad Institute program, how would that be administered as far as taking the samples?
Right. So it's the nasal swab, not the deep, deep one, but the less invasive one. We would need either paid medical staff or medical volunteers from what Broad shared with me. That's an option to be made locally to actually administer it and package it up. And then it gets shipped to Broad.
So their fee for, for test doesn't, doesn't take into account that?
No, it truly is the test and the running of the lab.
The other question, and maybe this is a Susan Rask question, but the, are insurance companies obligated to pay for COVID tests if there are no symptoms?
You're on mute, Susan.
I wish I knew the answer to that, but I'm not sure. I mean, if you're symptomatic and you get a doctor's orders to be tested, your insurance will cover it. If you just choose to do it on your own, I don't know.
What about if you're directed from like your school district? Well, you wouldn't know that either.
Anecdotally, it's a mixed bag.
Yeah, that's my take too, is it's a mixed bag.
Yeah, unless the state or federal government mandated that it's going to be a case by case.
Right.
So we don't know of any mandate on that front, right?
No.
Yeah. Lori, do you have any more to tell us?
No, no, that's the, that's the summary. That's the status we're at. Certainly really intrigued at what this could offer. Even the one time piece intrigues me a lot. I just think it does give us some facts. The cost and the challenge of it all is overwhelming to a point. And so I find myself just circling one minute. I think we should try to figure it out in another. I'm like, I don't know how that happens. So there is talk in other communities of fundraising, corporate sponsorships and things like that. That would be a big effort to take on, not, not one unworthy necessarily, but we'd have to really talk through that.
So is there any notion of Commissioner Riley or the MASs talking to Governor trying?
It's come up. I know it's come up, not to any, not to any impact. I haven't had the call with the commissioner tomorrow, but we aren't hearing any plan being made.
It's just a, I think they're spinning the same way you are, where they're wondering where the federal government is.
Probably.
It's sort of, it's the circles of frustration.
Yeah. Some of us individually are, no more than two, have been on a couple of calls around this topic. And, you know, I, I understand the comfort that a series of tests could prove, not a series, a, a test, a 4,200 person test could provide to us going into the buildings. But for what's going to be over $200,000 to perform it. And the fact that is, you know, a couple of people have already pointed out, it's a, it's a point in time that is only good at that point in time, by the time you get the results, people could have been infected. I just don't, between those two things and then, you know, I think one of the problems the state has based on all we have with Emerson is I just don't know that there's enough testing available. If school districts all of a sudden start saying, we're not going to start school, you're not going to come into the building unless you've got a COVID test. And now all of a sudden, all the students in Eastern Massachusetts are trying to get COVID tests in time to go into school on roughly the same day. So within a 48 hour span. I, I think as comforting as that may sound to people, parents included, when parents try, start trying to make the appointments to go, to go get those tests done, I think our phones are going to be ringing off the hook here about, you know, well, I've tried to get a test appointment and insurance company will pay for it. I can't get a test, you know, within 50 miles of here. I've got three kids. You know, it's been mentioned, maybe we'd need to stagger start, which, you know, is a challenge in and of itself. You know, I, I'd love to be able to do this, but I, I just think it's a, I think it's a straw horse. I just don't think it's going to be.
We, we did. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. We did look at whether there might be other supporting logic for this in the form of different, better, earlier medical intervention for any positives that were detected. Were we to test 4,200 people? And the answer from the physicians, the medical officers was no, no. The, early in the onset of this disease, there are no dramatic and special interventions that would be called for or, or introduced because of the positive test. People, as you know, are simply sent home to self-monitor and hopefully things don't get, get worse. So we looked to see if that was an argument that we looked into this. And the answer was unfortunately, no. It doesn't add more, more data to our decision making process. It's not a factor.
I do think there's maybe two things I'd suggest. One is, well, one suggestion, one's a comment. One is we, if nothing else, we've benefited greatly from Emerson's liaison with us that if we have symptomatic people, we know where to send them for that quick turnaround versus the seven to 10 day wait that's happening at other labs. To me, that's very significant that we can get results that fast. Rather than, I mean, if you've, if you're waiting seven to 10 days, your quarantine's almost over. At least makes a big difference to be able to get it fast. So we've got that liaison and support from Emerson now to know how to access that. And two, I'm pretty intrigued to follow up on where the spit pilot testing is just to hear what option is brewing there so that I can bring that back to you. That might have fiscal pieces attached to it for one, but also just to hear where the next layer of testing is going, I think might be beneficial. I know the liaison to, to Broad and this other lab in New Jersey has continued to say, give it six months and we're going to have a $2 test that's really easy to work with. This is, you know, so soon in to a, a new, new virus that it's just evolving literally daily and weekly. So, so I can definitely do that follow up. He had a meeting today with that lab in, in New Jersey.
That'd be excellent, Dr. Hunter. Thank you.
Yeah, it seems like it's looking at the saliva tests that are much more recently priced. It's just the, you know, it's open source and I guess most of the ingredients are in supply or available. As the other, you know, I don't know all the details about these tests, but it just sounds much more scalable and affordable. So I think we should sort of follow that and see where that potentially might lead us.
In your conversations, and I know this is very preliminary with regarding the New Jersey lab option, did they discuss that all dilution, like the more samples that go into, the more people who contribute to a sample, does that impact the accuracy of the tests?
That wasn't mentioned. I, I could ask.
I've, I've read at present, it's four or five is where it tops out. Is that what you've read, Susan?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what they said to me too, was four to five.
And do they give a sense of turnaround on that one?
I believe so. I'll get more details for you. That was a secondary conversation. That was a sort of, oh, by the way, as we got off the phone. I'm like, wait a minute. So I will call with more detail tomorrow.
I think remember something like two to three hours, but.
I think based on the time, which we have 20 minutes left before we turn into pumpkins here. We are going to have a meeting likely on Friday because we're needing an executive session. So if there are things that we learn ahead of time, maybe we. show on that, on that agenda item, we can actually have a short meeting to talk about some of this if we'd like to. I'm not trying to stifle conversation on this. I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah. No, I think that's a good point. And if we are looking like we're heading to another meeting this week. So that'll actually be a good thing.
Any other questions about the reopening plan? As it stands, we are going to take a vote on approving the hybrid reopening plan here in the action items. So.
I'd like, I don't think we have time for this. So I'd like to put this idea forth that, that because we have a lot of things in play, number one, number two, we're now quite time limited. Three, because there was the building walkthrough, what, yesterday, I believe. And we've got two school districts to consider with reopening. I, I hope we might entertain postponing those discussions so we can do them thoroughly. If indeed we're going to meet on Friday. I haven't thought this through, but that's my, my inclination, given the potential magnitude of these conversations.
That's a, I think I would ask others to sort of weigh in on that because if, I don't know how much more we're going to learn before Friday and we, we really need to give people a chance to start planning for their return to school and their, what they're going to have available in the way of services post-school if they're trying to go back to work. And, you know, we, you know, we're getting down to the, to the wire.
We do have opening dates. We do have the hybrid model laid out. We have the daily schedule laid out for start and end times. Work is happening probably furiously within each building for student scheduling and so on. So our calendar and that calendar don't need to match up.
I don't know if I could offer an opinion. I have a pretty strong one. I would really ask that we consider approval tonight. I think we've got a lot of work going on. I feel very strongly we should be going back to the buildings. I think we've been very thorough in our planning. We're going to be very conservative in that return. And if there's a reason not to stay, we will not stay. But I think the metrics show that it's safe to open and then we watch it very, very closely. The extraordinary amount of work and preparation that's gone on, I think needs to get validated or, or turned because the pace we're working at to, to not have a definitive plan, just I think would be really hard on the folks creating the plans, on the families that are anxiously awaiting for this final word that your support is there to reopen. I think that's why you have 73 people on today because that's what we put on the agenda. I, I just.
So Laurie, you offered this suggestion, but obviously all these things are caveated that, I'm not saying caveat the vote to reopen, but I do want to have a more thorough discussion about some of the building logistics that we observed on Monday. And I have some concerns at the high school and I'd like to discuss those and I don't think we have time tonight, but I don't think it would change my vote on whether to reopen the schools based on what the plans you presented us. I just think that I have some concerns about some of the logistics at the high school. And I don't even think I have a thorough picture yet.
No, indeed. No one's had that thorough picture. I mean, if the will of the committee is that the principals need to come present to you.
Yeah.
That hasn't been shared with me. So I guess we could do that. But to be holding off too long is getting.
I understand. It's just, for example, the notion that the campus, I'll just throw this out there. The campus will be open at the high school. I have very serious, very serious concerns about that.
We can have that discussion.
So that's just one of them. And I just don't, you know, I think that on the other hand, I have very, you know, there was some fantastic work that's being done that I saw in the walkthrough. It's just unbelievable. So on the walkthroughs, I'm not saying, I have a lot of confidence in what's going on, but I just, I think for, as a committee, we should have more thorough discussions than we have time for tonight. But we can certainly go ahead and have the vote and then have those conversations afterwards.
Yeah, I would need those assurances that we're going to have a proper opportunity to do our diligence. Your words, Dr. Hunter, definitive. To me, that means this committee has an obligation to get into some of the details that we simply have not gotten into because many of them haven't been, been available yet because of this furious pace of work. So can I agree in concept that the reopening plan makes sense? That again, the calendar we put forth is one we can probably pull off. That the, the way K5 is going to work, the way 68 is going to work, the way the CCHS is going to work in general. Yeah, I can, I can support that, but I too will insist on the time to engage pretty deeply in the details because I think that is an appropriate role for, for a school committee right now.
And I will ask, we lay out a pretty clear timeline, so I'm able to bring that to you because I do need the principal to be the lead on that.
Great.
I think what I'm hearing is we could hold this vote to approve the hybrid reopening plan. We clearly expect some input, some further input and the ability to provide some input for those people who have been in the buildings or for whatever other insights folks might have. But that, you know, barring any major changes in data or some unpersane failing in the process, we have for the hybrid opening, which I, you know, I think folks have been very thorough. There may be a lot of things here or there we'd like to know more about. So we could go ahead and vote on that and give people that assurance that, that we support the hybrid reopening as a committee. And support the superintendent in this process.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I could support voting on the, on the plan right now, understanding that it's based on, I mean, one is based on what we saw through the, through the tour yesterday, all of the work that's been done to see, to, to have faith in that direction that it's moving. I'm, I'm happy to endorse that, but I, like Cynthia, have some remaining concerns and questions after that that, that I think are worth getting into at some point. But I think as long as we understand this is our best, you know, we, you know, are voting on whether this is our best course forward based on our information as of August 18th and.
Why don't we do this? We'll, we'll vote tonight. We'll also on the, we'll have a, a portion of a public meeting on Friday. And if, if you could, if you have things you'd like to know more about or like to opine on, come to that meeting with that list so that we can, we can then prepare for, for the, to provide those, that input that you'll need. So that we can, we can feel comfortable with what we're doing. I mean, we've got still, it's not quite a month, but close to a month and a lot of work is going to get done between now and then. And, and, you know, we're going to be, there'll be a lot of changes in information over that time, I'm sure, the way this is going. And we'll be, I assume we'll be kept apprised of everything as we have been.
I'd like to make certain that we put the remote learning plan right next to the hybrid plan because we do have families who want and need a remote plan to be a, an option that's equally viable.
I assure you, we're spending a great deal.
I know, I know Dr. Hunter knows that. I just want to make sure that in our language, we give that equal billing that we're, that it's not getting lesser attention. That's all.
So while I have a proposal, because we, we were supposed to review, do a final, the policies, can we move those to Friday?
Let's, let's see why not.
And then do you have language for the vote to reopen?
Yeah, let me see here.
I think it's, I can give you proposed language. We didn't attach it to the agenda. I think you'd, my suggestion would be you to approve the reopening plan for, remember we had called the elementary in-person versus hybrid, just to fit under the state categories?
Yeah.
Still means half day, but to approve an in-person opening at the elementary schools on a half-day schedule and a hybrid model as proposed, that's the middle school and CCHS as outlined in the roadmap to reopen report.
So I do want to do two, so Concord and then a regional. I think that's a good idea to separate them out.
I would agree. Yeah.
So, okay.
So do we have a motion that the plan for in-person school at the elementary level for a half-day as proposed in the roadmap? And a hybrid plan as proposed in the roadmap for the middle school be approved?
I moved.
Second from Mr. Johnston, discussion. Those in favor, I'll do the, the roll call for Concord, Rainey.
Aye.
And Johnston?
Aye.
And Booth, aye. Thank you. Wally, over to you.
And I would take a motion to approve the reopening plan for hybrid learning at CCHS as it is borne out in the roadmap to reopen report.
So moved.
Second. Oh, go ahead.
Seconded by Sarah. Okay.
Any discussion on this? All in favor? Oh, wait, I gotta do a roll call. Rainey?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Booth?
Aye.
Johnston, aye. Okay, so does anybody have, I think I had sent something out earlier and didn't get responses about Friday. Before we close up here, we got a couple of minutes. I guess first, Charlie, Laurie, what are your time constraints on Friday?
I think the only time I can't do is 11 to 12. I think other than that, I can move things around.
11 to 12 is better. Okay. And I'm, you know, it's sort of 12 to one tied up. What about other folks? Do you want to do it? I so much like to do it in the morning if we could.
Yeah, earlier is better for me.
So I'm, I'm working, so it's either like nine o'clock or.
Yeah. I think if we, we do have to get it posted, we could, can we get posted as early as 9:00 AM?
I think so. Aaron and Aaron's on here, so we'll work, we'll work right on it first thing in the morning. Usually, usually we can do it between eight and nine.
I think the clerk, the office is open at eight.
Yeah, usually.
Can you do that? Nine o'clock?
Yes.
Court, you're good there?
Yes, that'll be fine. I will note, just for the record, that there are citizens who are eager for us to resume our evening meetings because they have more traditional work hours than, than we do, that some of us do. But right now, we're in crisis mode in terms of scheduling, of course.
So we'll have a 9:00 AM meeting on Friday. Why don't we plan to open up again? And this is critical that sort of, I guess, just some sort of catch-all for things that people may want to ask for further information on, Laurie.
That would be very helpful. Another questions ahead of time.
Yeah. But just for the agenda, we just need a line that reflects that we're doing that. And we'll move the policy votes to then. And is there anything else we need to do in the public meeting?
Would you anticipate the executive session would be first or after?
Yes, and then the executive session after. And I think we try to prep the whole thing up in an hour.
Public meeting in an hour?
No, the whole thing.
The whole, well, I don't want to rush it. This is the time we're going into the detail.
I understand.
I, I, I don't want to put, put a limit on it before we've even started to.
Right. But what, we're not going to get any information Friday. What we're going to do is ask for information, which we can prepare and bring to that meeting to ask for.
Okay.
And, because I don't think the expectation is that anything is going to be delivered to us Friday.
So you're proposing we discuss what we need to do, need to know.
Right. And then we'll have a meeting Tuesday and, I mean, as much as, maybe we need to go into two meetings a week between now and school start.
Okay.
We can talk about that.
And these will be ready later than Monday. Each building is making its own handbook. I think a lot of the detail that you're craving. So those are getting finished this week. So we'll be sure you have access to those before Tuesday as well.
Great.
And I suspect our executive session will take somewhere in the vicinity of a half an hour. So, you know, an hour, hour and a half.
Let me ask a question. If handbooks are going to be finished and we're still discussing the wisdom of expanding open campus, are we asking for problems?
In terms of?
In terms of conceivably a school committee that wants to debate the wisdom of expanding open campus at this time.
Well, maybe that, that could be a, maybe an agenda before then, I, I think.
I mean, I just don't want to create problems with, with formal announcements at the building level before we finish our conversation.
No, I don't think that's a problem. We will not announce anything of that magnitude. Most of what's in the handbook is very detailed logistics of how to travel through the hallway and very specific, you know, how to, how the kids are going to enter the building, that sort of thing. So.
Good. Great. So we've got to get off here because of
Yes.
upcoming meeting. I think we've got everything figured out for that Friday on the run here. Great. Well, thank you. We packed a lot into this two-hour session. And thank you, Susan, for your input. And we will take a motion adjourn.
So move for both?
Second for both.
Wilson? Rainey?
Aye for both?
Booth?
Aye for both.
Johnston, aye for both. Let's see if the hearing.
Very good.
Everybody going to that?
I'll be there.
Courtney and I are going to be there. It's not imperative that you come, but.
I was going to go.
You're there, Laurie and Jared. Much as we'd like, Courtney, I'd like to carry the day.
So Wally, help us meeting at the same time, correct, Susan?
Pardon me?
Yes.
Help us meeting. Right?
Yes.
Yes.
So I'll go to that.
Great. Okay. Thank you.